Good evening. We call to order the Garden City Zoning Board of Appeals and Combined Planting Commission Meeting to order dated January 8th, 2019. We have a roll call. The commissioners that are present this evening. Commissioner Cox. Commissioner Garland. Commissioner Self. Commissioner Orell. Commissioner Crosby.
Here.
Commissioner Jackson.
Present.
Commissioner Perry.
Present.
And Commissioner Monroe, myself, present. Again, good evening to everyone. Happy New Year. We hope that you all had an even blessed and happy holiday. And we're glad that you have submitted applications for your particular request with regard to doing business here in the city of Garden City. This commission serves on a recommendatory capacity. And so as you come before the commission, we will ask certainly that you will come to this podium here on your right as the meetings are being recorded and state your name upon approaching the podium. First on the agenda, we have PC item 1901. That is Ms. Karen Jones. Can you come forward, please, ma'am? Ms. Jones, we understand to the property owner requesting to establish a use as a child center to be located at 4710 Augusta Road. Thank you, ma'am. State your name for the record, please.
Karen Jones.
Thank you very much. We are the commission and we would like to take into consideration your petition and request to the city of Garden City. So we're here to hear your request.
Yes, sir. I wanted to open a childcare center at 4710 Augusta Road, which is right next to St. Joseph Canola Building and next to adult daycare.
Okay. Well, we thank you, ma'am, for, again, choosing the city of Garden City as a place of business. And we hope that after we have the commission, we'll vet and question you on several things with regard to making sure that in going forward, whichever direction we decide to go in, it will be something that is beneficial and expedient for the city as well as for you, the business owner. So we, you have any questions that you would like to ask the commission regarding your endeavor?
No, sir.
None? We'll open up the floor for the commissioners to inquire with regard to your enterprise. Yeah? Starting Chief Crosby, you have any questions you'd like to...
No, don't.
None? Commissioner Self?
Good evening, Ms. James. Can you tell me, what are the hours of the operation going to be? And then the number of children that you expect to have?
6:00 AM to 6:00 PM and 14.
14 children. Thank you. That's all.
Okay. Any other questions? Commissioner Jackson?
I think I'm okay. From what I've read and the other questions, I'm pretty well satisfied.
Okay. Commissioner Perry?
How are you?
Good. How are you?
I'm doing wonderful. First, I want to let you know that I'm very familiar with the industry that you're interested in going into. So I do have a couple of questions. The first is the 14. How did you choose 14 children to serve in your building?
Because of, we're supposed to have so many square feet per child and we have two available rooms that actually accommodate more than 14 children, but that's the maximum I wanted to go for.
Okay. I was a little concerned also about your parking. Tell us about your parking and accessibility to the building.
Well, I contact Transportation. I contacted them and they was discussed with me the footage that I'm supposed to have entering in and exiting and out on the right-hand side. They'll enter in, they'll exit out. At the end, the ones that have to park, we're going to have space because it's only going to be three workers. So we will have space up towards, off to the side, you know, where it won't, you know, become congested. We have spaces over to the side if somebody needed to run in and, you know, talk a little longer or it took longer than expected, they will have parking to the side.
Have you seen your site plan?
Um, yeah.
Do you realize that the site plan does not represent that particular verbiage that you just shared with us?
Now, we contacted DOT, so that's why. Yeah, as soon as they said, we used the law. Okay. That's, that's was the thing that I gave you with the plaque showing that the lady in the property next door said we could use, we could share the exit and we filed it in reports. So he don't have it on there. Yeah.
Can you say it a little louder, Ron?
There's only difference in this configuration that she's showing that she's presented for you guys.
Mm-hmm.
She's saying that she's got an entrance/exit.
Mm-hmm.
Two different entrances.
Mm-hmm.
Entrance and exit. If that's different, she's planning different, she needs to go back to DOT and get that approved. That's something we can prove at a local level.
So essentially, you're saying that you have both an entrance and an exit?
Um, yes, sir. And we, and we have DOT. I had, I had to get the neighbor next door to say that it's okay if we share that because it's actually her property.
Mm-hmm.
DOT gave me a form for me to submit down to the courthouse with her signature and my signature so it'll be legal. It's in the plaque book. I, I gave Mr. Ron a copy, but I don't know why he don't have it on my plan.
Mm-hmm.
Right. If that document may say that, right, we're getting that, but if you show them, they need to show them the plan.
Okay.
And then with DOT, if you put it down in the document, they've got specifications that you gotta follow.
Mm.
And it says the plan. If they gave you permission to use somebody else's entrance...
Well, no, they didn't. She, they said we had to get together and, and decide that we was going to use that because it was a part of her property because I was going to use it, but I didn't know that my plaque was, you know, different. I didn't know that was her driveway, so we had to sign that.
Okay. So let me ask this. Is the type of business that she's looking to operate, is it allowable with just one drive entrance?
But the state is not going to approve that?
Well, state's already approved.
No, I mean for a childcare center.
For...
She's going to have to have a, she's going to have to have a way in and a way out and parking.
Dr. Perry owns a childcare center. She's an entrepreneur. She was a daughter-in-law.
Right.
But either way, this affects DOT. I would say that we need to table this, so I could go back and get that consideration. If it's with DOT, we'll look at it in-house and we'll debate that before we finish.
Ms. Karen, what, basically, this is going to help you when you get ready to submit your application to Georgia Bright from the start as well, because they're going to look at your entire site plan. And when they look at your site plan and they see on here that there is not an easement for you to come in, come out and park without, and if you do have to use someone else's property to do that, they're going to ask you for proof of that. And if that's not a part of this plan that's been approved, they're going to send it back to you and you're going to have to wait even longer. So we want to try to get it fixed at this level before you send it to the state.
It's a place that the city's going to confront before we do that, that property, and then they've got a right to do that.
Okay.
Just come in and explain sometime and talk about which way you're planning on going and tell you who you're getting proof it's from. And then you can bring that back to the commission and figure out what you're going to remember.
Okay.
So, Ms. Jones, so you understand what's transpiring? So it's not a denial of any sort? It's a matter of just making the amendment to your blueprint to show exactly what you are stating here, that you do have both an ingress/egress or entrance/exit in your driveway? So you said you already have in motion approval from the adjacent property owner to utilize that exit? So you have one now and then you have approval to use that. So it's just a matter of modifying just your blueprint just to show that for the most part?
And don't get discouraged. I know, I know personally that it's a lot of work to do with your endeavor. Stay encouraged and diligent and it'll, it'll all come to fruition for you. Sure it will.
So do you have any questions? So are you clear with what's being stated here?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So as Ron has stated, it's a matter of just making those modifications and just coming back, resubmitting your application and just showing that entrance/exit on the blueprint plan. Okay? So essentially, at this time, we are just table the matter. It's not a matter of denial. It's just a matter of tabling until those things comes into compliance.
All right. Thank you.
Chairman Monroe, based on the information, I make a motion that we table this item, PC 1901.
I'll second it.
It's been motion and second to table item PC 1901 pursuant to stipulations. Any discussion on the motion? There being no discussion, voting on a motion, all in favor by raising hand. Motion carries. Thank you, ma'am. And I'm certain if you have any questions, you can call Ron or Tanya and they'll be more than happy to address you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the item, PC, on the agenda, PC item 1903. Evan Gertz? Did I say it right? Representing property owner Plantation Townhomes LLC requesting a variance to deviate from the code required landscaping for the proposed development of 4810 Augusta Road. State your name, sir, for the record.
My name is Evan Gertz. I'm an engineer at Du Plantis Design Group in Tibbetal, Louisiana, and I represent our client, Verdade Real Estate and Vertical Construction Management in this particular development. So my request tonight is for a few variances from the landscape requirements. You should have a site plan, a landscape plan in front of you. If you don't have a landscape plan, have a few full-size copies here I can put up there.
Yes, please.
Yes. The hearts are small.
Evan, that is the same one that you sent to us, right? That's the same one you sent to us? It's the same one you guys just sent.
All right. So you want to specify particularly what are the variances that you are making specifically?
Yeah, sure. So if you look at the bottom right-hand side of the plan sheet, there's a, there's a table right there and it kind of explains very clearly the landscape consultant laid out, what your code requires of our site and then what we're providing. And so you'll see that there's a reduction overall in trees and shrubs on the site and there's one landscape island that's not there. What we're trying to do is provide a development that has landscaping that meets the intent of your ordinance, but that doesn't impact existing utilities. And therefore, that's why there's a few trees, overstoryed trees that are not present along the right-of-way on Augusta Road because there's some overhead telephone and communication lines right there that would be impacted by those trees. And then also a plan that provides parking that's sufficient to provide for safe traffic operation around the development.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Gertz? Commissioner Jackson?
I don't have any questions.
Commissioner Perry?
Um... Do, there is... Yes, that's what I...
Mm.
It's kind of, it's the same as what you're seeing in the background there.
So I see that the required parking spaces, 20 parking spaces per this property?
Yes.
And he's asking...
The difference that you're seeing, the difference that you see there is the landscape islands, basically.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, there's, there's a row of parking over on, I guess, as you're looking at the plan on the right-hand side.
Mm-hmm.
I think it has 13 spaces in it.
Right.
So your ordinance would, would stipulate, or your ordinance does stipulate, that you wouldn't have more than 10 parking spaces in a row without separating them by a landscape island. So the Popeyes corporate preference for a site plan is to have 25 parking spaces, which is a lot for a fast food restaurant, but not a lot for a Popeyes. So in their operational experience, 25 parking spaces is the number where they're very comfortable. Okay? So your code requires that we have 12. We try to get as many as we can to get to the Popeyes preferred 25. So we're looking for, we have 20 reflected on the site plan right now. And if we add that landscape island, what it would do is reduce the parking count by one. And so that would be, you know, frowned upon by Popeyes at the corporate level and therefore that would really, they wouldn't like this site plan. So it was already a variance for their corporate approval to have 20 instead of 25 spaces.
Okay. And how many is on this, this right side?
There are 13.
13?
There are 13 in a row on that right side.
Mm-hmm. And how many on the left? That includes the two handicaps?
Seven with the ADA.
Right. Okay. Any other questions?
I have a question. Could, could you come forward for me, please?
So the ADA path from...
Right, ADA path.
So ADA path from the ADA stalls of the building is here to the building. And this is the front door of the building.
What are these?
These are curb ramps. So the curb along the edge of the building is six inches...
I'm talking about here. What are those?
That's, that's, that's a ramp.
Those are curb ramps?
Yes, ma'am. That's a ramp. So this is, this is a flat landing that's flush with the, the two drive aisles. And then you have to go, you go through a little ramp six inches into the building. This is typical.
And the ledge, ledge, ledge down here is... Is that the name?
Um, it, no, it does not.
Why not?
We could, we could have it say that. That would be helpful?
Yes, it would be very helpful.
We usually, we usually would call these out to say ADA curb ramp and then these are detailed in the...
It's not, it's not indicated on the legend.
It will be in his full sets of plans. So that's one of the ADA requirements, along with the other handicap details for the parking.
And, and this is the existing legend for all existing site features. This legend up here. And we could, we would easily add it, but what you see in a full plan set is an actual detail about how to construct this ramp so it meets ADA guidelines.
Should it not be indicated on here, Ms. Alexander?
Not on a conceptual plan like that. That's a full, full architectural detail that comes with the architectural sets of the plans. In the plans, you're going to have architectures, you'll have structures, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and that ADA will be in part of the architectural sets. But that's, that's something that's a fire code that they'll have to do.
You can't, it cannot legally be constructed off of the plans in front of you.
I understand that. Yes, I understand that. I just was expecting to be able to tell that this was ADA assessable by looking at the plan. And me looking at this drawing, it does not look like what I'm accustomed to seeing as a ramp. So I then referenced the legend and it's not indicated there either. That's where my question derived from.
You know, that's a good thing.
Mm-hmm.
And you're stating...
That's a building code requirement.
Yes, I understand.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Anything else you'd like to present, show forth at this time, Mr. Gertz?
No, I believe the rest of it I'll save for the planning commission.
Okay.
So with the variances that we're, that you're asking us to approve aesthetically, what is the major difference that we would see if we were to pass by Popeyes?
You'll see the Popeyes.
Uh-huh.
If, if the variance is approved. Aesthetically, it's still going to be screened, the parking lot. There's still going to be trees in the front. So it's going to look very similar. There are less trees and less shrubs on the site based on the variance. And then on the interior of the site, you have one less landscape island, which in our experience, when you have a landscape island that's very small, such as the size of one parking stall, it doesn't function well because it's not enough space for the plants to really thrive. Aesthetically, this is a very nice site. This is probably one of the sites with the most landscaping for a fast food restaurant that I've ever put together.
Any other questions for the petitioner? There be none? Is there anyone here who's, is in opposed to the petitioner's request? There not being any...
I do have one other concern. I'm sorry. The Denmark entrance, coming in from the Denmark entrance and to the, facing Popeyes to the right and behind it, there, there are apartments there, correct, or housing? It's a residential area?
Yes, it's all the Plantation Townhouse.
Okay. And are you expecting to have quite a bit of foot traffic from that area? And what, and if so, if you could address it even further, what amenities or features are incorporated into your plan to ensure that there are safety features included in this plan?
I'm not sure how many folks reside back there and what the expectation is that they're going to walk to the restaurant any more than they might walk to restaurants that already exist in the area. So I, I can't speak to what, what they're going to do. We did consider the, a sidewalk adjacent to our property along Denmark Street, right?
That's what I was hoping to hear.
What, what, that reduces your opportunity for landscaping on this site. So we're not opposed to that, but if you, if you look at the site plan and the map, you see that the property line falls on Denmark Street and we're, there's, there's no space behind the property line adjacent to Denmark Street, the landscape, if you go and put a sidewalk there.
So on the, the right, the right side of the property or the northern side is a sidewalk? Now, on the... That's what you're stating, that a potential sidewalk on that side, on the Denmark side?
Yeah. So there looks like there may have been a sidewalk there. It's hard to tell, right? When this was developed, I believe it was back in the eighties maybe?
Right.
Was it a movie theater?
Yes, and bear in mind that...
It's a small shopping center. So there may have been a sidewalk there adjacent to Denmark Street.
And bear...
Private road and I don't know when that development was demolished.
Right.
That, that sidewalk is no longer existent or not...
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's existent anymore.
Denmark is not a city street.
Right.
We would be open to record if you think that there's going to be significant foot traffic from that development behind us. We could maybe just add a sidewalk and a crosswalk across our driveway to, to kind of connect to that development from the southwestern side. Our, our, the engineering logic behind not putting the sidewalk adjacent to Denmark Street is twofold. It's one for landscaping and then two for car overhanging. So there's not a whole lot of space there. So when people pull into a parking stall, they typically, a lot of people will ride up, you know, and their car kind of goes over the little grassed area. So if that wasn't a grassed area, it was a sidewalk, then their car would be overhanging the sidewalk and it would render the sidewalk not safe or not usable. And so you might as well have landscaping there, which acts as an actual buffer between the road and the parking lot. But I, I definitely can see some opportunity, I can show you, if, if that's, if you think, if you think as a board, as, as local, knowing that, if you think that there's going to be a lot of foot traffic from back here.
I think so.
I agree too.
We, we could potentially just add a curb cup and just add a...
Before we agree to that, let's go back and talk about some of the things that we talked about, about how tight this site was to start with. The tight radiuses and all that we were trying to achieve there. Where are you going to put a sidewalk?
Yeah, so I'm just thinking around that we, we could, we could open up a sidewalk in the landscaping here somewhere and, and try to get a crosswalk delineated path this kind of over to the building. So whether it's here or back here somewhere, I don't think that we don't...
Well, no.
If there was enough space here for it, we would have reflected it there because it would have been, it would have been being a good neighbor for the folks that are back here.
Well...
It'd have been a city street where they'd ask them to do that.
And, and I'm thinking too at the same time, because that street is going to take on a high volume of your business. And as a good neighbor, right now, that space accommodates kids catching the bus, going to school and returning from school. And so I think it would be sufficient to put a sidewalk there because where are the children going to? Now, I think if, those kids will now have to catch the school bus on the street. The school bus will no longer be able to turn in and utilize that open space. So the kids will be stopping, the school bus will be stopping at the entrance of Denmark and...
So you're saying that currently the school bus uses this vacant lot as a bus stop?
They use that vacant lot as a bus stop.
Okay.
You come by in the morning, go by in the evening, the parking lot is filled, parents picking up the kids, dropping kids off and so forth. Now, it can create a danger, perhaps not as much in the morning because kids are going to school early and you are not open, but in the evening, when they're getting dropped off, at the same time that parents are getting off work, work, people are getting off work and will be stopping by to get something to eat. And so that's, that's, that would be a conflict of interest, I would see. Where are those kids going to walk? In the middle of Denmark? They should at least have a sidewalk to walk from Highway 21 back to those apartments.
Is that not a discussion, though, that we should have with Plantation Townhomes?
Correct.
Versus Popeyes? I don't think that that's Popeyes' responsibility. I think that that's the responsibility of Plantation Townhomes.
Well, they are the developer. They're developing Popeyes. That, this is part...
We don't own Denmark Street.
I understand that.
Right, but the need...
But this could be a development on the property that you are owning as a good neighbor.
But the burden for the, the bus stop is Plantation's responsibility, not Popeyes'. They've been encroaching upon their property doing that.
But the burden for a safe entrance into his building is going to be Popeyes'. And I think for the safety and the good neighbor aspect of this business being here, there should be some kind of safe way for foot traffic, for pedestrians to get to your property, whether it be a full sidewalk or a cut through, a pathway or something that goes from the, like you just pointed out to me. There needs to be something there. If not, you're going to, it's going to be, you can anticipate this being a very valuable business and a large portion of your business coming from the folks right there in that area.
If I can, this property fronts a major artery.
I understand.
And that's the only reason it's here. So the only thing that you can require is a commission, is anything that's required off of that major artery. You can't require them off of private property to do anything to that.
Mr. Alexander, my comment is not based on, my comment is based on good neighborship and the fact that there, we know that there are going to be a lot of foot traffic coming to your business and just that if you could consider, or if there's any way that it... And just that if you could consider, or if there's any way that it could be done, to add some kind of easement into your property for pedestrians.
Yeah, I think that that could potentially be accommodated. We would, I would give her with my client and make sure that it's something that they wanted to do. They'll have to check, they'll have to check with their insurance carriers and all, and make sure that that's something that they want to do. Um, if we do endeavor to put some kind of connection to the back there, you can imagine that that's gonna interrupt potentially the landscaping plan that's before you right now.
And you've gotta get the neighboring properties permission to do that.
Right. And so, so I'm just saying, if, I will present that to my client, since that's your desire, I, I hear you, and I, I don't think it's a bad idea. And so I'll present that to them, um, and if it's something they wanna pursue, we can put it on paper and, and pass it back to you and, and to the administration and see, you know, if we can all agree to something, and then we can work with Mr. Denmark to see if that's something that he's prepared.
So my only concern, I understand as far as saying creating, um, a walkway for people to come in and out of your business. But even greater than is the safety concern, because we're gonna box the people in in Plantation. They're gonna be boxed in now. So that open space is no longer accessible for people to, uh, residents in Plantation to just walk freely across. So their only entrance and exit to Plantation is going to be Denmark Street. That's, that's, that's gonna be there only because you're gonna have a fencing of sort on the other side of the property. And there's a, a easement that leads to some homes in the back between the gas station. Now, in the rear Popeyes', there's to be like a wooded fence or something, in the back?
No, sir. I'm currently proposing-
What, what's a-
There's landscaping.
Landscaping?
Yes.
Currently calling for sod, correct?
Yeah, and I'm certain you all are not wanting to, uh, residents to walk over your landscape. That won't be the purpose of that. I think that, um, and I understand what the petitioner's request, but again, that's a major safety concern.
I guess what I would point out to you is that Denmark Street is a private road, and it's, this is the avenue you correct, which serves Plantation Townhomes. And legally, that's the only avenue that serves Plantation Townhomes. If you look at the right-of-way line for Denmark Street, which is a private road, mind you, they have sufficient right-of-way on the opposite side of Denmark Street for a sidewalk, if, if that is something that was required by the city. Or if you look at our, our side of Denmark Street, our property line basically follows along the curb line of Denmark Street.
We cannot make decisions right here for Denmark's property whatsoever.
And Ron, correct, aren't we just discussing the landscape plan? We're not discussing the site plan, correct?
But that's part of the landscaping, right?
It's the next item of the agenda, because this, the, the ordinance requires that things that front city streets or major arteries should come to you guys for approval. Reason for that is access from public way, not to Denmark Street. We can't legally turn it down for any kind of interest right here. This, 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 this entrance that is agreed with Denmark is between him and Denmark. It's not a circulation. We couldn't pass, if he only had this entrance, we couldn't pass that as a site plan. He's gotta have entrance from the public court, and he has to have. And he's done this for convenience. That's probably theoretically, or realistically, the entrance he'll always use. Because it's more convenient, because of the turnout and turnout.
I mean, I understand that, but let's, let's look at it as a city with regard to the safety of residents. And again, when, you pass by there, uh, six thirty, seven o'clock in the morning, that parking lot is filled with children. It's filled with children. So- I under, but that's irrelevant, I, I understand that. The point that I'm saying is, now when Popeyes occupy that space, the only, uh, uh, entrance, uh, exit that those kids are gonna have is Denmark. With no sidewalk, that means those kids are in the street.
Denmark should have had a bus turnaround, bus stop for their property. It should have been somewhere where that bus could safely stop and pick up those children. And now that they've developed this property, the school board is probably gonna come back and say, look, you're gonna have to figure out a way to get on a bus and get our children, or if that's not gonna work anymore. They should have already done it.
Well, is there something that the city can say with regard to this particular development, uh, with the Denmark's, to say that, um-
I'm gonna give the school board a call tomorrow, because I hadn't thought about that, but it doesn't affect his approval.
But in going forward, it affects, it could affect the, the residence. Doesn't affect his approval or development, but his development can affect the-
We're trying to prove things for, to keep quality of life of citizens.
Right.
But as far as using anything that the function of this property to approve or deny the approval of this project, it depends.
How much traffic are, is Denmark looking to absorb? In coming and exiting your business?
So the Department of Transportation did not require that we do the traffic impact analysis.
Hmm.
Um, their estimate for the project, without doing an actual analysis for the property, with that driveway configuration, is that the development as a whole would likely, it's somewhere around a thousand to eleven hundred vehicles per day, if I'm remembering correctly. So a thousand trips per day, uh, split between those two driveways, right? There's one on Denmark and then one on Highway twenty-one.
That you all's, uh, turnaround per day?
Approximately.
That's your projection, a thousand? That's a lot of traffic in and out.
So, um, the, the, um, conversation of having the, I don't, I'm not sure what the terminology is, where there would be, um, a modification to the, um, landscape, and then there'd be some kind of walkway leading to Popeyes' property. Is that something that you're willing to discuss, or to take?
Absolutely. So, um, unfortunately, it's not my decision to make, because I'm not the developer in this case. I, um, I see no reason that they would be opposed to having a pedestrian access from their property to the, to the apartments in the back. So it's certainly something that I would bring to them and would be willing to look at from an engineering perspective.
Okay.
As to the sidewalk adjacent to Denmark Street, uh, there's no space on our side of the right-of-way to make those improvements. We were gonna go over this in the site plan portion of this, but, uh, we will be doing improvements to Denmark Street. As you know, the apron adjacent to the, to the highway is, is really beat up, um, so we're gonna remove that and replace that and make it safe and bring it up to G dot standards. We're going to mill and overlay Denmark Street. Uh, we did geotechnical borings in it and analyzed the pavement section to know that it's gonna, after we're finished with it, it'll be able to handle our traffic and the, the truck traffic deliveries for the store. And so we're making improvements to Denmark Street for what's within, you know, our, our rights as having access to that road. As far as having a sidewalk, I, I can't speak for my client that they do or don't want a sidewalk on their side of the street. If they put it there, it'll be on their property, which may be a liability for them, that they're not willing to, to take as it not being a requirement. And if it goes there, obviously, none of that landscaping will be able to go there, um, and there may be some issues with it being that close to the edge of the curb of Denmark Street and that close to the edge of the curb in our parking lot. So from an engineering perspective, we haven't looked at it that closely, because it didn't look feasible. If it's this board's desire that I bring that to my client, then I would just request that, you know, in whatever resolution that you would pass tonight, that, you know, if it's an approval of the variance request, you know, with, with the stipulation that, you know, DuPont Design Group is gonna work with a developer and the city administration to try and come to terms with the sidewalk adjacent to Denmark Street. But that's, we're gonna provide what's required of us to provide as far as access to the site from the public right-of-way.
And from the city's standpoint, if he wants to put an entrance from the backside right there, and put a sidewalk down the back, there, there's just sod landscaping that we're losing right there, except for that one tree that we had to keep.
Okay, well-
Maybe we'd be okay with that.
All right. Well, let's, let's, let's go ahead and put to vote the, the, the variance request, because I think what comes in question is with regard to the site plan on the next item. Uh, tho, that's where these questions will be addressed, um, and, um, and going forward. So, uh, any other questions? Anyone here this evening, uh, is in opposition of the petitioner's request? There being no, um, opposition, uh, take a vote on PCI item nineteen oh three, pursuant to staff's recommendation for approval?
I make a motion that we approve nineteen oh three.
I second the motion.
As been motioned and seconded to approve petitioner's request, PCI item nineteen oh three, voting on a motion all in favor. Voting approved. That adjourns our zoning opponent meeting. Uh, a me, uh, motion for adjournment.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Meeting adjourned. Uh, now that opens up now our planning commission meeting. We have two items on the agenda. Um, PCI item nineteen oh four, Ms. Melissa Baseric.
Thank you, I'll cover it.
All right. This time, we have a request for a site plan review for property we just discussed.
Okay, sure. So the site plan is in front of you.
Mm-hmm.
Ron noted, it is a tight site, so this is tough from an engineering perspective. What's in front of you, we think we've come to a solution that's safe, um, and is gonna, is gonna function well.
Hmm.
We've had a significant, I know that you're considering access and we can't access, so we've had a significant amount of discussion with G dot. Over the, I can't remember the last time I was here in Garden City. I wanna say it was probably March of twenty eighteen. So over that last nine months is what it's taken us to come to some resolution on access for this property. And so what we've done is, we've explored right turn lanes on the Denmark Street, we've explored this right turn lane that you're seeing on the site plan in front of you. Um, and, and this is where we've landed with G dot, just based on what's possible to accomplish. So I also have here, and I only have one, uh, this is the auto turn drawing that shows truck access to our site.
Yeah.
So you can see the, the truck circulation. Um, as far as Denmark Street's concerned, it's private. We talked about the improvements that we'll make already. We have an agreement with the, the property owner of Denmark Street to be able to utilize that road. We have the entrance and exit on Denmark Street, and then an entrance and an exit on the highway-
Let's see.
-as well. You can see that the truck wrap comes in and leaves. There's a, a loading space, uh, where the truck can park for loading as far as the city's orders as well.
So where is the dumpster to be located?
The dumpster's in the, in the back.
In that rear corner? Here?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, would that be fenced?
It's in an enclosure, yes, sir. The enclosure is usually made of, it's CMU concrete block, um, and it's, it has gates on it.
So, um, pursuant to the truck's entrance, it's going to utilize Denmark?
That's correct.
Right. So again, now we having more traffic utilizing Denmark, which I understand is a private road. But you all are certainly are gonna benefit from that private road.
We have an agreement with the property owner to utilize that road as access to our property, so he understands what our development's gonna be.
Mm-hmm, right. And so, Ron, I think that the city has an obligation, being that the developer and the property owner have come into agreement to utilize that road, that the city, uh, get involved in a convers, conversation, um, with the owner, with the school board, and Department of Transportation to, uh, provide for the safety of those residents in and out as walking, particularly the kids in particular. Now that we not only are gonna be utilizing that road for, um, your patrons, but you're talking about for service vehicles as well.
And, and, and to point out-
And dumpsters.
I don't know the exact number, but, um, this is not a, this is not a shipping facility, right? So this-
I understand.
It may be one truck per day, it may be.
Well, I understand. Uh, it takes us one, one day, one bad situation. You're talking about, again, dumpsters coming in and out of Denmark, uh, what, once or twice a week, to empty yours dumpster? And that can coincide with early in the morning, with kids being out again, or late in the evening?
You got dumpsters throughout Plantation as well.
Well, I understand that, um, but that-
And prior to this property, it was a strip shopping center that had multiple locations that also previously included a restaurant.
That was a strip mall there?
Yes, it was.
There was about six-
Three days my time, I can't comment on that.
Businesses in there.
And I think that there was a sidewalk alongside Denmark.
Including a, a chain restaurant that was very busy at lunch, as well as a coffee shop that, of course, was very busy in the morning. So, uh, what did they do then? I mean, I, I know you can't answer that, but what did they do then?
Well, that's what I'm saying. I think it was a sidewalk that was alongside Denmark. It was a sidewalk.
Actually, the entrance and the cutouts were from Highway twenty-one.
Yeah.
Say it again?
The entrance was from Highway twenty-one, from that street.
It is. But I'm saying alongside Denmark, from Denmark to what's the back street there in Plantation?
Most people turned into the, it was a, the front part of the building was a parking lot. And so most people accessed the, um, entrance from the parking lot, which would have faced Highway twenty-one. They did not access it from Denmark.
Right. But there was still a sidewalk, there was still a sidewalk from Highway twenty-one alongside Denmark going into Plantation. Irrespective if they utilized Denmark or not, there was still a sidewalk for the people to utilize. So they wouldn't have to walk in the street or on the development's property.
And even, I agree with the chairman, and even though it used to be that way, that doesn't mean that it has to stay that way, especially if we as the board see that there's a potential that, um, a, you know, a child could be hurt. I, I'm adamant that there needs to be some kind of safety inclusions in the plan, because of the volume of the traffic. And then, and the, and considering the, the pedestrians and the, the residents that's there.
I, I, I hear your concern. I do, uh, it sounds like to me the issue is stemming from the townhomes that are behind our property.
And the school. Yes. Yes, that's the main thing, for me.
For the residents. It's not just say, just the townhomes, I mean, it's specific for the residents. Um, that is a low-income, uh, development, and, uh, there's a lot of foot traffic that comes in and out. And you're going to, um, bring an additional thousand, uh, more traffic per day into that general vicinity.
I guess what I would ask of you, Mr. Chairman and Commission, is in light of that, looking at the site plan, what, what's your recommendation? What would you like to see, knowing that the strengths of our project?
Well, that's where I think that we should turn to the expertise of our city, that for the, for me, that would be my answer. Because I, I'm, you know, I'm not an engineer, I don't know how to make this happen, but I can tell you what I want to see happen. And then it would be up to the experts to come really close to making that happen, if they could.
I'm, I'm over the engineering department. The city cannot require them to do this. You guys as the planning commission can make a recommendation. So if you have a recommendation, you can make that, and then we can go forward with that.
Mr. Alexander, I'm not, I, I'm not concerned about what the minimum requirements are. I'm concerned about the safety of those children back there.
And I understand what you're saying.
And, and, and I, I know you do, but with the volume of traffic that's going to be there, and knowing that those children are there, children go to school now at age three on school buses. We need to have some kind of safety feature, and they're going to be walking to your restaurant. They're, these are gonna be your, your patrons.
Dr. Pepper, I'm gonna make a call to the school board in the morning and make them aware that they don't have proper bus loading for this facility. They've been using private property that's being developed now according to their rights, and they can no longer do that. So now, they've got to do something with Denmark to make him facilitate that. But it's not these people's concern. And the city cannot require them to do this.
You feel like it's not your concern?
Well, you, I, I think we have a responsibility. And I know you said, uh, everything is pursuant to law, but let's just look at the magnitude again. I, I don't know if you've ever arrived by there, six thirty, uh, between six thirty, seven thirty in the morning.
I fully agree with what you're saying, and I didn't realize what you, the, the point that you had until tonight. But that's something that the school board and Denmark need to work out, not him. But, that's something that the school board and Denmark need to work out, not him. And I'm gonna call the school board in the morning and make them aware of it, and they'll get involved in it, but-
Right, but I'm saying that we are aware of, of it as a city, that we can, we have a responsibility, even though you're saying perhaps it's out of our hand, but at the same token, we have a responsibility of, of the city to see about the welfare and safety of our citizens first.
It's not out of your hand, but your case is against Denmark, not these people.
Well, right, so, uh, I would love to see this development happen, I would love to see it. I think it will benefit the city of Garden City, as well as the, the enterprise would do well itself. Um, with the volume of traffic that goes along Highway twenty-one, the fact that you are right there by a residential development, that's gonna serve your business well. So, uh, it, but I would like to again see that before this moves forward, that if it's not something that can be, uh, mandated to the developer, that something be mandated by the property owner, the, uh, the Denmark's themselves.
You guys-
Ron, can I interject, please? So, the question is to this board, we propose to the property spokesman tonight what we would recommend. So the question for Dr. Perry and Chairman Monroe is, what are you recommending that will allow you to, uh, feel comfortable in the safety of this plan? What's your recommendation?
A sidewalk.
And where would the sidewalk be located?
Well, either this, again, if a good neighbor, um, development, w- with regard to this development on your side of the property, or again, if that's not possible, or you're, you all are not willing to do that, then a sidewalk on the o- other side of the property, on the Denmark's.
Okay, but we're discussing- But we're discussing this site, so where exactly is your recommendation for the sidewalk?
The sidewalk that's alongside Denmark.
Okay.
The sidewalk alongside Denmark Street, because that's the only exit that the people have, the residents have, out of plantation.
I wanna make sure that I understand, so I can make it.
Put a sidewalk on this side right here. Will that work for y'all?
Well, that's, that's what I just said, if they're not willing to put a sidewalk on their side, then the, something has to, a sidewalk has to be somewhere.
Well, I can't let him do it here because I said the site's too, too tight, and we gotta have that landscaping, we're already doing the variance for landscaping, so we need to keep this. But, if he can work it out with Denmark, put a sidewalk on that side over there, you know, that, that's in Denmark's best interest to do.
To do.
I guess where I understood your concern was so that people from here have a way to access our site.
As well.
I understand you think that's gonna increase. And the concern with the sidewalk adjacent to Denmark, is, is it just in general, you'd like to have a sidewalk there, or is that specific?
Just a general here, yes, either on this side or this side.
If you don't say today, we can make you put a sidewalk there because of pedestrian traffic.
I understand.
Now, for what, for what Dr. Perry is saying as far as having an interest or amusement for the residents, sidewalk could be, a opening can be there in the back somewhere. Or on the, on the corner.
For bus loading.
Mm-hmm.
And they're walking across-
Because that is Denmark's property, so they are, they have a right to be there. No, I'm not saying that a sidewalk has to be per se in the back, but-
What I'm saying is this is no problem, it's just solid, we take that out.
Okay, well, likewise, a sidewalk for sure coming out of here, and if necessary, in the back to allow for what Dr. Perry was saying, interest for the people to come in.
And acrossing here.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
It is.
Absolutely.
He, he's not able to agree to that, correct?
No, he's not, and that's what I'm saying, the only thing I'm trying to emphasize here is, we can't hold him accountable for that tonight in our vote.
At what point can we hold anyone accountable for it?
You can make recommendations and be in notes, and if he agrees to it, then I'm gonna make sure that he does it. But you can't-
But he can't agree to anything until he goes back to his, to Louisiana, correct?
Until a callback.
It's a callback.
Well, and see, that's what I'm saying, it still has to go through, go back to the Denmark's, right?
Well, we can't rule on that tonight.
And-
We can't use that as a ruling, as a, um, reason for ruling on this, just because it's not-
So can we table this motion until he can speak to the different parties?
I would like, uh, that's what I would like to see transpire, because if we vote and move, uh, for approval, and they begin development and construction, what's going to be the determination to say in the future, they're gonna come back and put that sidewalk there? Or what's going to be? Not, not per se him, but he's in business with the Denmark, so they're all in business together.
Chairman Monroe.
And, I understand, so who's gonna then enforce whether the Denmark's put a sidewalk there, and-
That's what I'm gonna do tomorrow, is call the school board and let them know that that property is not under code for pedestrian traffic, and they don't have it by the bus stop. If they continue to use that for school board's traffic, they need to put us a bus stop back there. And they need to have pedestrian traffic made yet accessible to that bus stop, from all points of view. Something that should have been done when it was built, but it's been wrong for twenty years, don't make it right. They've been using this guy's property, now he's developing his property, and he's running use, and they can't, uh, hinder him from that.
Isn't there another property owner that you have to talk in consideration?
Yes, sir.
Across Denmark driveway, Mr. Denmark has his office.
Right.
Where y'all talking about putting a sidewalk, right?
Right.
Does he own that land all the way to twenty-one, or does that little old lady in that white house up on the corner?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, 'cause I know when they built the place, we had, the city made that lady get rid of her chickens.
Mm-hmm.
People in the-
Right.
Complex didn't like the smell.
Can I have a sidewalk with you guys for just a second?
Sorry.
I know when the shopping center was there, school buses went down into the complex.
But Chief Crosby is right, prior to, there's, that was not a bus stop.
I don't, I'm not concerned about what you said, I'm concerned about the, I was driven down there. And seeing all those children out there, dark, it's dark.
Yeah.
And those children should, and deliveries come from it, deliveries, garbage gets-
You ought to see it when the fire truck goes down that road.
I've seen little children as young as three years old standing off the other side of the buses, and they need to have a, a sidewalk, and also a place to get home.
But I think it's that, um, the plantation townhome's responsibility. I agree, it's that plantation townhome's responsibility.
And pedestrians to watch that property, they shouldn't have to be jumping over grass to do the butt pass, and that's what's gonna happen. That's what's gonna happen in this situation.
Then that's why you make a recommendation, that if you want the plant, if you want the plant to be changed in the back of the property, when you get them to do that. What recommendations would you make? That you make a motion to put it based on- If you don't want-
Okay.
-the property, so how do you, you're gonna make a decision?
Right.
What?
I was telling Terry, we'll get to him in a minute.
Um, move forward, I think. Well, we have a further discussion, we have a discussion with the Denmark's as well as with the school board. Well, we just put the vote, put it to vote. Any other discussion on PCI item, uh, nineteen oh two? Anything you would like to share, thing before the commission, further to your request, sir?
We're excited to be here, and we've been working on this project for a long time. It, it has its challenges spatially, um, so we're trying to give you the development, uh, that, that's gonna work there, and it's gonna be a good thing for the city. If, if the commission has any recommendations or requests of the developer that are outside of your, your requirements or your authority to stipulate, hold us to, just please let us know, so that we can try to, try to make that happen, um, trying to be a good neighbor for you and the city. And, and we're well aware, some of the things that you would see as being beneficial, uh, would also be beneficial to us, and are things that, you know, we may like to see done as well.
Hmm.
Please let us know if you have recommendations.
What's the lead time on this development?
So, uh, where we are right now is in full design, so we're working on, on plans. Um, and it looks like, I think it's the end of the month that we would be submitting for permits with, with full plans. And so, that's just a, it's a cause and effect, that this is the first approval, so if the site plan, since the variance was approved, thank you for that. Um, if the site plan were to be approved tonight, then that would allow us, uh, to move forward with preparing full design plans for the building itself, to have them ready to submit for permit at the end of the month.
So you all are not looking to break ground, per se, no time soon, in the next foreseeable month or two?
Um, I, I guess I can't speak for when we put a shovel on the ground, there's a, a long lead time on the GDOT permit.
Mm-hmm.
So as soon as permits are all in hand, or close to being in hand, we'd put the project out to bid for thirty days. Um, and then, we'd work the project and start construction as soon as possible.
Okay.
I think it's gonna be good for the city, if it does anything like the one in Rincon does, that place is busy, that Popeye's in Rincon.
We hear that a lot.
Okay, any other questions, comments for the petitioner? Um, anyone here in opposition of petitioner's request? There be none, I'm gonna say, um, Mr. Gerds, that, um, as Chief Crosby has stated, that certainly we would love to have, um, a franchise of sort in the city of Garden City, I think it would serve, uh, th- this population very well, as well as it's a high-volume corridor that receives over a couple thousand people that travels that corridor a day. Um, again, you've heard our concerns, and it is something that we per se can't rely, can't really enforce, but, uh, at the same token, there is something called good neighbor. And I'm, I, I don't know if you have kids, uh, two kids, and I'm certain that you would want any development that would, that, uh, directly influences the safety and well-being of your children, that anything that could be done to ensure their safety, whether it's, uh, mandated by ordinance or, uh, something that can be done by a good neighbor, you would want that to be done. And I would hope that you would, uh, and I would recommend, uh, that, uh, as a good neighbor, that you all would definitely take that into deep consideration to do what you all are able to do. Perhaps it may not be on the Denmark side, uh, a sidewalk, but as you stated, that there is enough property in the rear to, uh, put a sidewalk, and we're going to follow up as a city with the school board, follow up with, uh, GDOT, as well as the property owners, uh, the Denmark's. So again, um, pursuant to, uh, your request and staff's recommendation, I am gonna entertain a motion for approval, however, and I would hope you would recommend that you all would take into consideration with this, uh, vote, as a good neighbor, to, um, take into consideration and think about those kids, it's a number of kids. Uh, perhaps one day, you and your staff and board can go out one morning and see the number of children that catches the bus right in that vicinity. Uh, so you all could, um, certainly be more apt to be a good neighbor.
Thank you, Chairman, I, we, I'll certainly make that recommendation to my client, um, and I'll be here tomorrow morning, so you said it's around six-thirty in the morning?
Between six-thirty, seven-thirty, you'll begin to see kids, uh, assemble out in the parking lot, um, catching the bus, probably to, probably eight, eight-thirty, whatever time they have to be to school, and as well as in the evening time from four or five, sometimes it's dark when those kids now are getting off the school bus. And again, if they're getting off on Highway twenty-one, and their only means of getting back to the apartment complex is Denmark, and, you know, I'm certain that you all experienced yours most high-volume outside of lunchtime, is dinner time when people are getting off work. And that will coincide with those kids getting off the school bus at, you know, four and five o'clock in the evening time. So yes, just, just take a look and observation.
I'll be there in the morning, and then we will definitely follow up with Mr. Alexander about whatever conversations he has with the school board, and see if, from the deal-making perspective and the engineering perspective, we can get creative, Mr. Denmark, and try to help push this forward.
So entertain a motion, uh, pursuant to staff's request for approval.
Make a motion that we approve PCI nineteen oh four. Second.
It's been motioned and seconded to approve PCI item nineteen oh two pursuant to staff's recommendation for approval, any discussion on the motion?
Nineteen oh four.
Nineteen oh four, pardon me. Any discussion on the motion?
Chairman, I just ask that the minutes reflect that we are concerned in regards to, um, pedestrian safety, and that that be a consideration in regards to approval of this plan.
Thank you. Voting on the motion, as well as to the comments made by commissioner to take into deep consideration the good neighbor with respect to the safety of the, uh, children, pedestrians of that residence. All in favor indicate by raising your hands. All opposed? Thank you, motion carries. Last on the agenda, uh, PCI item nineteen oh two. Ms. Terry Coleman, representing property on Chatham City, Chatham County, pardon me. Requested site plan review of Two Sunny Purdue Drive. Certainly. Uh, state your names for the record, please.
Good evening, I'm Terry Coleman, I'm with Coleman Company, um, and, uh, glad to be here, Linda Sims is with me, she is our landscape architect, land planner. And, um, anyway, so not looking at my work tonight, you're looking at hers, so anyway, it's, uh-
Uh-oh.
But, uh, no, anyway, we're here to, uh, to ask for approval for a, uh, a preliminary plan. This property is located, uh, Sunny Purdue Drive, Center Point Development, uh, there approximately three or four warehouses back there, uh, coastal logistics and, uh, some other things, and then the new recycling is further back, which, uh, you know, we've been involved in several of those projects. Um, this particular project sits on approximately fifty-four acres, um, there's a good bit of wetland on the property. Um, there's roughly, uh, eighteen acres of wetland on the property, and, uh, yeah, our goal is to impact very little of that, um, only where we'll have to for access, and, uh, just, uh, rounding off a few corners. Um, the disturbed area on this project, uh, the area that would, we would clear and, uh, fill, uh, and develop, uh, is somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty-eight acres, so, uh, out of fifty-four acres, I mean, you know, it's, uh, it's gonna be, uh, you know, a very conservative, uh, project. And, uh, you know, if it wasn't for the wetlands there, obviously, I mean, I wouldn't be able to brag on that, but I mean, the fact that there are wetlands, we're, we're able to, uh, you know, to, uh, do a, a small percentage of development on the property. Uh, the project consists of a, a small warehouse, uh, around sixty thousand square feet, um, and container storage and, um, and, uh, trailer storage. Um, uh, the, uh, the project will have rail access, um, there is an existing rail, uh, along the, uh, the southern end of the project. Um, and, um, glasses on here. Um, we are zoned, um, I two, and we're surrounded by I two. Um, this is an industrial, uh, 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 facility. Um, and, uh, the property across, uh, Dean Forest, north of, north of us and south of us, is all, uh, zoned industrial. You know, the, uh, what we're doing with the, with the project, when we came in, had a pre-design meeting with, uh, uh, the city manager, Ron Alexander. Um, we talked about, uh, what we were gonna do with the project. They asked us to maintain sixty foot of separation across the front of the property. Um, and, and we're doing that. And that sixty feet, uh, that setback, uh, will be a mixture of, you know, maintaining existing vegetation. We like to save all the healthy trees in there and, uh, underbrush, uh, make it sightly, make it nice. Um, and, uh, if any additional planting is required, we'll be, we'll be glad to plant in there. Um, and that's along, uh, Dean Forest Road. Uh, Sunny Purdue Drive, uh, we're talking about doing something similar to that, um, you know, within about a forty-foot, uh, area. And, uh, you know, obviously, we'll maintain the healthy trees and, uh, you know, underbrush, and make it, make it nice as we can, and, and try to hang on to some decent canopy trees. Uh, the rest of the property, uh, where the warehouse is located, uh, is approximately sixty thousand square feet. Uh, we've got about, uh, twenty dock doors that'll go there, uh, customer parking. Uh, the dock doors will be facing the, um, the east. Um, they will not face Sunny Purdue, or they will not, and they will not face Dean Forest Road. So, uh, you know, we're, uh, I, I, I think we got a nice little project here. Um, it, um, the, the county owns the property, um, it is, it is for sale. Uh, we have a client, uh, Reliant Realty, uh, that is, uh, has it under contract. And, um, we're hoping that we can, uh, uh, get y'all's support for this project tonight, so we can, uh, we can move forward. And, uh, I do have a, a building elevation that I can share with y'all, that, uh, that we had prepared.
Yeah.
This is a, uh, this is a typical warehouse, um, um, but we are, uh, some, uh, you know, color panels, uh, within the facade, um. This is, uh, looking at the project from Sunny Purdue. So, when you turn in on Sunny Purdue, you'll see the, uh, the office in front of the building, along with, you know, uh, some nice panels and, uh, some, some facade that, uh, that breaks up, uh, you know, the, the warehouse look and, uh, the difference in the current build. This is looking at the project on, uh, Dean Forest Road. You can see, we're carrying out the same pattern. This is, uh, uh, split, split placed, uh, split, sorry, split placed block. And, uh, and it's a nice windows along, uh, here, with women on, across the, across the, uh, the, the front of the building. And, um, but, uh, anyway, we'll be glad to answer any questions that you have.
So, the nature of the warehouse is, what type of storage?
Um, at this point, um, there is no tenant. Um, we're, uh, the, the property went out for bid, uh, with, uh, Chatham County. And, uh, and these folks are, uh, the, uh, uh, selected bidder for the project, and we're working through due diligence to be able to, uh, tee the project up for, for development. And, uh, so we, we do not have a tenant at this point, they do have several in mind. I mean, they've been getting all kind of calls on the property. So, um, I mean, at this point, I'm, you know, we're not, there, there is no tenant.
Right, and that's what I was gonna ask, what type of tenants are you all looking to service?
Uh, well, it would be, uh, you know, for the project, uh, it would be a nomination of, you know, the warehouse dependent, uh, tenant, uh, whether that's, uh, uh, warehouse distribution, um, um, or, uh, you know, just, I'm occupied, if it's somebody that would, uh, who would need that in the square footage, or, you know, for the, uh...
What was the square footage again?
Uh, sixty thousand square feet. The, uh, warehouse is back at the back, I think it was in the, the three hundred, three fifty.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, category, I know, uh, Coastal Justice, the first warehouse they built, around thirty-five.
Mm-hmm.
And I think one of the sites around, around the same, uh, square footage, and they're tenured there also.
And so essentially, you just have o- office space and an open warehouse?
Well, there's a, there's a, a component of office space on there. And that would be probably five thousand square feet out of the building. You know, we've got adequate, uh, indoor parking, um, and we've provided, you know, an activity that would, uh, you know, give them, give the project current build. I think they've done a great job inside the center, Center Point, and, uh, you know, uh, Coastal Justice. Their current build and, uh, design of their buildings, uh, they've done a real nice job. It's a good looking center. And you certainly don't want to, uh, you know, be the ugly, ugly one in that, so they're, they're planning on doing a good job.
Okay, any other questions from the commission?
So, without a, uh, dedicated tenant, you'd have no idea what kind of traffic impact it would be.
Well, the, uh, the, the traffic impact, um, um, you know, as, as far as, uh, distribution on the sixty thousand square feet, I mean, that's fairly defined.
Yeah.
Um, um, you know, the, the, the rest of the traffic we're talking about is, you know, if they get a, a tenant that's gonna be dependent on rail, there'll be a good bit of that traffic that'll go, uh, go to the rail. Um, and then there will be, it could possibly be some incoming traffic and then outbound, uh, uh, distribution locally, uh, you know, and regionally.
You've got a container storage yard there?
Yes, sir.
Any stacking?
Our storage. Well, we've looked at it, uh, won't be able to stack a lot because of the, uh, soils. Um, it is a little bit of a low area. The reason the building is where it is at, uh, there's a, about two acres up on the front that, uh, or about three acres up on the front, is, uh, out of the flood zone. Most of the, the other property is in the flood zone, so, uh, flood plain mitigation will become a factor. And, uh, so, we'll have to be extremely conservative, uh, you know, with, uh, you know, with how we, uh, design the site.
Thank you.
But, uh, that easily could have, have trailers, you know, you know, chassis and that kind of thing, you know, stored here also with the demand from the port, and the great proximity that we are to the port. There could be some of, uh, some of that also.
Any other questions? The warehouse, is it, um, to have refrigeration capacity, or is it just dry material?
It was just, uh, just dry material, uh, no refrigeration capacity, but I assure you that if a tenant came along and needed sixty thousand square feet of refrigeration with the right, uh, terms and conditions, it'll happen.
Okay. Any other questions for the petitioner, PC item nineteen oh two? There not being any, anything else you would like to present before the commission, sir? Okay, anyone here this evening in opposition of the petitioner's request regarding a site plan review of Two Sunny Purdue Drive? There not being any, I will entertain a motion pursuant to staff's recommendation of approval.
Make a motion to approve PC nineteen oh two.
I second the motion.
It's been motioned second pursuant to staff's recommendation for approval of, uh, PC item nineteen oh two. Any discussion on the motion? There being no discussion, voting on the motion, all in favor by raising hands. Motion carry approved.
Y'all very much, and, uh, hope we have a happy new year.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adjourn.
Meeting is adjourned, thank you.